Public would like to come forward and comment on the budget. This would be the time to do that. Do we have anybody that would like to make comment on the budget, in the public?
John, you're in the hot seat, John.
Sure, I will. Should I go to the microphone?
Yep, John, and I guess name and address?
Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. John Arnett, 6326 Outlook Drive. Just a note of appreciation to maintaining the mill levy and the same rate as last year. I know things change and it's necessary to make changes to increase the mill from time to time, the mill rate from time to time, but just to note, it's good to see that you worked through the numbers and were able to maintain the levy, the mill levy as it stood in 2016, in the proposed budget. I guess I'll add that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no other members of the public, I will close the public hearing on the 2017 City Admission Budget. And I will next open the public hearing on the Rock Creek Greenwich District Number One Budget. So if there's any member of the public that wants to comment on that budget, now is the time to do that. All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing on Rock Creek Greenwich District Number One Budget. And open the public hearing on the Rock Creek Greenwich District Number Two Budget. Any member of the public would like to comment on this topic? Seeing none, then we will close the public hearing on Rock Creek Greenwich District Number Two Budget. All right, then going into our action items. First item of business is the 2017 Budget Resolution. Any discussion on this item, on the council floor?
So historically, we've just passed a budget resolution that's intended to communicate publicly what policies, fees, taxes, et cetera, are that are underpinning the proposed budget for the coming fiscal year. So we would adopt this, advance this onto the council's agenda, trying to capture everything that we heard throughout our budget conversations. But we can certainly amend or modify if anyone has any suggestions.
Any questions, comments, in council?
Good job, Senator.
Thank you.
All right, let's move further discussion, and we'll take this to council.
Is there a recommendation?
I recommend we take that to council.
Pat Quinn is the vociferous recommendation.
Quite so.
That will not be on the list.
We've got a dictionary for this meeting.
Okay, item number two. It's a resolution adopting the 2017 through 2021 CIP law.
I guess, again, for the last several years, we've adopted a resolution, again, that's really just intended to be very public-facing and communicate our policies, the total amount included in the community investment, five-year community investment program. One of the things that has been important, also historically, is to include a listing of projects that we've discussed that are not necessarily included in this, so that the public has an understanding that the list is longer than they can get to over the course of this five-year plan, and that we don't lose track of those projects, which are still under consideration but not yet programmed.
Questions on this resolution? Seeing none? Have recommendation to take to council?
I recommend to the council. No, I don't think so.
Okay. Item number three, the annual budget adoption.
So as this advances to your agenda, you would consider and approve the budget resolution and then the CIP resolution, and then just so we can document it for the county clerk and for the record, we will write a series of motions for you to actually then adopt the city admission budget, the Rock Creek Greenwich District Number One and Rock Creek Greenwich District Number Two. And we do those Greenwich District budgets separately because they are technically separate taxing entities, and so they do have their own set of state budget forms that are submitted into that, helps us create that paper trail that documents that. I would, when we get to the council meeting, I would, one of the things we talked about as we went through the budget process was authorizing staff to move forward to get the camera systems and the phone systems replaced at City Hall as part of the 2016 budget. So the whole package that we put together contemplated that, was about a $226,000 estimate of expenditures for both of those systems, upstairs here at City Hall, the police department, the community center, and the public works, so really all of our facilities. So I would, we'll recommend at the council meeting that you all just take a motion to direct staff to continue with that process. We would bring all of those contracts back for your approval, but we would like to go ahead and start with that. I can tell you, the chief was just telling me this afternoon that the camera system downstairs was out yesterday.
It was out yesterday and came back up today, and those cameras run throughout the entire station except for the booking itself, but it also includes all of our holding cells. So when the system is up and running, we're recording any time there's movement. When it's not, and the system's down, then we're not. And my worry is if we have somebody that, we have a medical issue or somebody dies in one of our cells, and we have cameras, but there's no video because they don't work, that could present a problem down the road, so.
That's really all I have for item number three. So big four, four separate motions or recommendations that will appear on the council agenda on the 17th.
Are you going to take one?
Probably, I would imagine, the 2017 budget and then the direction to move forward with the camera and phone purchase, and then the two Greenwich Districts.
Can you be getting back just on the outcome of the proposals on the road security services?
All right, any other questions on item number three? All right, seeing none. Item number four has to do with janitorial services. Brian?
Yeah. Some old stuff, but janitorial services. So we've been using a maintenance worker from the community center for some time now, sort of part-time, shared basis, to provide janitorial services for City Hall, police station, as well as the public works facility, the L R. Basically, the system, pretty much coming in, dumping the trash, cleaning up the restrooms, maybe caging bed for the floors, something like that, but it's pretty minimal. And that gentleman's actually retiring, or has retired already. So with that, we kind of thought maybe about looking at actually contracting those services out, getting a little more service, and then kind of relieving the community center staff. They can focus their attention on leasing the community center entirely. That's going to become much more prevalent for them, much more important for them, as they take on some additional leasing out of those facilities for outside organizations. The church that's interested possibly leasing the community center on Sunday, so there's going to be some more demand of the maintenance staff or the community center to keep up with all of that. So with that in mind, we went ahead and took out bids for janitorial services for the three buildings, and we received back five different proposals ranging anywhere from $63,000 to $21,000, a little bit being $21,660 submitted by Town and Country Building Services. We went through with the bid, and we went to order, and we did check with the references and all the references that they've done, good work for them. So we are recommending that we accept their bid for $21,660. There is enough money covered in the budget that you all just adopt it and take to the city council, and we think there's enough savings in our current budget that we cover for four years, given it's maybe around this year.
So you said the three buildings, it's City Hall, the police station. And a separate one?
We pretend like there's a separate one.
Yeah, okay. The public works facility, L R.
How do we handle background checks on workers, contract workers?
So they'll give us a list of those that are going to actually be working in the buildings, that we get that list from the police department, and the police department will do the background checks on them. They won't be, you probably saw that in bid documents, actually some areas of the police department that have no access, records and things like that, they won't have access to those, those areas where those records are kept. They won't have access to jail facility, unless they are, hopefully they will. Unless they don't pass your background check.
Any other questions on item four? Is there a recommendation to take this? Consent?
Yeah.
Consent? Okay. Item five is selection of voting delegates for the League of Kansas Municipals and the National League of Cities Annual Meetings.
Every year, you select your voting delegates for both these meetings. I've listed who's attending, I did list Councilmember Crane, and that's incorrect, she's not going to the L P M meeting. So for L P M, you have the opportunity to select three voting delegates, and if anyone else is going, we'll list them as alternates, we also have two alternates. And then for the National League of Cities at this time, Councilmember Crane and Councilmember Schlossmacher are going. We get one voting delegate, one alternate for that meeting, so if anyone else is interested in going to any of these, just please let them know, they can still reach you, register.
Is that something we need to do tonight? Hello?
Do what tonight, why do you want, select who?
Yeah.
Yes, so I would, Councilmember Inman, Quinn, and Garrity are all going, we could, you might want to select them as your voting delegates, and if there's any staff going, they can be your alternates, and then the same for N L C, select either Councilmember Crane or Schlossmacher as your delegate and one alternate, the other is the alternate, so.
Okay, so first, we have three going, and they're all delegates, voting delegates. The second, we have two people going, one needs to be the voting delegate, one needs to be the alternate. How do we get into that?
So I would now make Debbie Crane as a delegate for the N L C, and I'll be second.
And then you'll be our alternate for that? Would you like the three council members for L P M?
Sure. Hey. I'll make it, thank you. Making that on consent.
On consent agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Moving on, item six, temporary C M B permit for Johnny's.
Take it.
Thank you.
All right, take it, consent.
Consent.
Okay. All right, item number seven, it's an update on city-owned property by Laura.
Yes, thank you, and I'm going to pass it around, we have an additional agenda. As you know, we, the Brentor contract on the former Neff property was terminated in June, effective July 1st, and that escrow has been settled out, and we received $22,000 of those escrow funds as a part of that contract. We also are currently in the process of demoing the Harley Woods building, which means we're going to have two parcels that are probably have some redevelopment potential within them, and so as we've talked about this, both have some unique challenges. We know, based on the process that we went through before on the Neff property, we actually issued a request for proposals from developers. I think Councilmember Crane, you were on that selection committee, I don't recall. Anyway, there was council people staff who took proposals, I think we received three proposals by the time they got ready for an interview, the other two had dropped out, and so Brentor was the only proposal that you had on the table. We've used that kind of similar art process for a specific developer when we sold a portion of the community center parking lot in Mission Square was constructed. Again, we had, I think, a lower response to that process than what we had anticipated. I think we ended up with a great project, what certainly wasn't what we envisioned when we kind of came out of the gate with Mission Square, we were contemplating a mixed use project, actually, I think, on that site. So one of the things that we've talked about is we may benefit by actually hiring a commercial real estate broker to assist us in marketing these properties a little bit more widely. So we released a request for qualifications last week to about 10 different commercial real estate brokerage firms here in Kansas City, and we also posted it on the website so it's available to anybody publicly. Their responses are due back next Monday. We go through a process, there won't be a price associated with a request for qualifications, so we will be evaluating them strictly on their qualifications, and then potentially we'll move into negotiations for a price or a commission or fee. There may be a combination depending on what services we ask them to perform, there may be some commission-based, and there may be some flat fee or hourly rate services that we ask for as a part of this. So we would go through that process, and as Debbie answered to your question, we'll bring back a recommendation because the council would have to authorize any contract that we would turn into a firm, and so we would look at keeping that process moving forward, both because of the Neff property is in the West Gateway area, so form-based code applies there, and the Harley Woods is in MS2 zoning, as some unique considerations from a floodplain standpoint. So once we select a broker, I think it's going to be important to sit down with them to make sure they clearly understand what we're looking for on those parcels, and maybe even a conversation in a work session or an upcoming committee meeting where we talk about goals and objectives, I think it would be helpful to have that broker on board, though to kind of have that market perspective as we think and maybe dream a little bit about how we might want to get the information on those properties out.
Do any of the considered entities at hand, have they worked around Johnson Drive sewers, can we pull that back into part of that?
Yes, so everybody, because, I mean, there'd be names that you would recognize, R H Johnson. The only one we didn't go to because they have an active development project here in the city is Lane Four, and so again, we're really looking for commercial real estate broker services, not developer services at this point. So we would bring that back to your September meeting. The handout is, back in 2014, we had a conversation about looking at parcels that were currently owned by the city that might be available, that didn't have a current civic use assigned to them, that we might want to consider for redevelopment. So if you look at this list, what I've given you, we can kind of walk through these, but we do own several pieces of property. If you start kind of up off of Metcalf, off of Foxridge Drive, you see a pink parcel, parcels one, two, and three, were all acquired in anticipation, if you flip to the last page of this handout, to some concept drawings and alternatives, if the intersection at 56th and Metcalf were to become signalized, and the reconfiguration of the road. So you can kind of see on this map, this is the pink parcel up here at the top where the curve of the road would come in, you see the question mark, that is a potential question mark, you see an X on one of the single-family homes, that was purchased several years ago, and then the property just here is also owned by the city. So again, I think this is one, this is an area where we just kind of play, sort of holding on to those in the event that we see that reconfiguration of 56th and Metcalf in that area. As you kind of move then flip back to your legend, if you look at four, which are the blue boxes, that's the Neff property, former Neff property, five, kind of the standard colored boxes are all parcels that were acquired as part of stormwater mitigation and floodplain mitigation. So the first one there on Woodson is that parking lot that we have, then you see the green building, is actually the Harley Woods building, and then those other parcels to the south of that are kind of parking area, the community garden for the Mission project. Then across the street, again, you have municipal parking lot areas. The area in yellow, we have actually now converted that to kind of the farmer's market space, green space, that's where the trail was continued. Obviously, in 2014, the last time we looked at this, we weren't using it for that purpose, but those are all of those parcels. And then if you see up in this corner, there's this little purple piece, and that is south of Shinian Parkway and Row, and there is, it's basically empty ground, there's a big drainage well that runs through the middle of that. Some of you may remember that several years ago, we had that under contract with Peter Ho for condominium development. So that's one, I think, maybe in the future, that has some potential for resale or reuse, we may want to talk about that one as well, but our initial focus through this process is going to be on the Harley Woods building and the Neff property.
Okay, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Harley Woods, I mean, are we totally sat with the market being where it is, because, you know, Ron Schaefer built up a beautiful architecture drawing of the market being there. The market people are totally discouraged because they don't have a permanent, they'd like a permanent place, and I just think that would be such a great opportunity to put the farmer's market right there where Harley Woods is, that's where the original joy was for, and it would be great, you would get the vendors off of Johnson Drive. So are we just totally sure that's what we want to do?
No, and I don't think hiring the real estate broker, I think, I think getting somebody on board, we still have that chance to then really talk about what are the best options and alternatives, because I think we will also hear about taking any space that we have along there and converting it to parking for Johnson Drive.
Right, that would be problematic.
So, so no, I don't think this, going through this, I think, just helps us understand what other opportunities we might have, so we can kind of balance all of those considerations and priorities. Because yes, the market, home for the market and parking are both issues that we've heard for that Harley Woods site. But I think it's important for us, I think it's going to be important for us to sit down with somebody to say, what would the market, what do you think the market would be interested in, what do you think we, you know, tell you?
Do you stand in front of the broker?
Yep, I sure do. So no, and that's why I think, you know, it is important to continue that conversation, probably with your broker in tow, about what is it that we, what is our vision for those, those parcels of those sites, what do we want to do?
I don't think we've ever sat down really and talked about our vision for the market. I mean, you know, I think that might be a healthy discussion, because, I mean, you're getting less and less people down there, but a lot of the vendors would like to have a permanent situation, so, permanent structure.
What would make it permanent, Susan?
Like they have a normal park, like they have a very.
Structured, like a.
You know, and you don't have to worry about taking your tantrum, you don't have to worry about the rain, you know, it's there, and I think that's what we originally talked about years ago, and that's why Ron Schaefer drew up that drawing, and it's a great drawing, and it's a great opportunity to put the farmer's market there, so. And I think we ought to get the drawing out, let it release.
Okay, we can do that.
Well, and then there needs to be some consideration or discussion about when we don't have the farmer's market operating, what else could the use be?
It's funny, if there's anything you can use for, yeah, like ban concerts and things like that.
Like put the concert on it.
What is the square footage of that Harley Woods building?
The property.
There is no square footage of the Harley Woods building.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's a mud field.
That's right, okay.
I should point to two.
It's a dirt lane.
Turf.
And, yeah, and again, you know, we do own those two, three parcels, actually, to the south of that, so there's some opportunities for looking at improving the parking situation.
Yeah. That seems like a more useful thing there is the parking, you know, not very there to put a lot of cars in.
Well, what do you see in the plans?
Yeah, I've actually planned, but I'm saying where the market is now, you draw a plan for that too with structures.
Well, the vendors, though, are concerned about being, you know, backing out to Johnson Drive, you've got people who are backing out on Johnson Drive, and there's just several issues down there, when you talk to those people, they would like to have a structure, not necessarily on Johnson Drive. So I just think we ought to sit down and do our vision for the market, that's, I don't think we ever have, I think it was just determined that's where it's going to be, but I think, I think it would be worth a discussion, and the plans, and the budgets, well.
Yeah, absolutely, is it something you want to stay on Johnson Drive, is there another rotation for it?
I don't want to be on the park, I think it's small, it's quaint, it's, other than the safety issue that you're addressing, I like, I mean, working down there.
The vendors would like. The safety issue, you need to not block the Johnson Drive, you know.
But they want a, they want a permanent structure, and I don't blame them.
Yeah, they want a coke.
They do, they do, and I think that's.
You can do that down there, too, doesn't have to be out on Johnson Drive.
I think that's what you want on Johnson Drive.
You have the whole big grassy area out there.
Because that's what you want on Johnson Drive, is what I'm saying, I just think we ought to look at the plan, so.
Okay, we'll get that out.
Any other discussion on this item? Anything else for us?
Nope.
All right, this is not a action item, so anything else to bring up? If not, then we will close the conference, and if there's any.
All right, I'll stay forward, I've got a bird.
We have five minutes each, I don't think we do.
Good, yeah, good, yeah.
Okay, sorry. So first on the action items are table and chair replacement at Sylvester Powell, Laura Smith.
Yes, and typically, you're, some of you may have looked at this and said, it's $3,500, why are you bringing it to us? So we have a policy that says if it's some, an item that you've approved as part of your equipment replacement plan, then we can go ahead and purchase that, and it doesn't hand back to the council. These items weren't actually budgeted until 2017, so what we asked when we talked about this at our last budget work session was pushing the carpet in rooms A and B into 17 and moving tables and chairs forward. So just to be transparent, we wanted to make sure that we, and it was a switch in a year, and a plan that wasn't approved that way, that we just brought this forward to. Wear tear on the tables and chairs, these are the things that we use in the conference center for all of our rentals, it's high usage, so we are planning to replace 60 chairs and 24, 60-inch round tables for $3,500. So we are planning to replace 60 chairs and 24, 60-inch round tables for $3,500.
And we were the last ones that were pumped in there, but we wouldn't have been.
And what percentage of our tables and chairs is it?
So these are not, obviously, the banquet chairs. So these are the chairs that would be used in like the breakout room and the party room. So the folding, these lightweight folding chairs are the ones that are used there in those rooms where you have kids in wet bathing suits sitting on them or, you know, any private things.
Birthday parties.
Yes, no. So I'll look, I don't know off the top of my head when we replaced those last. The 24-inch round tables, again, are the ones that are used in the conference table and other places. But yeah, just sort of been, they're not very attractive. Probably recycle them down. So if that's what we do with tables around here, we just hand them down. We can hand them down.
Point four is going to be held.
For the property, yes.
So I really don't have a big problem with doing that. You already switched it out and something else budget-wise, it's covered, so.
I found it interesting how they hold this, look this, in the, like, Dallas office and my places right now.
All right, so we're good? All right, we're good.
Where did we replace, where did you get this money from, 2017?
So we, we were scheduled to replace the carpet in the south, in the meeting rooms on the south side of the building, conference rooms A and B. One of the things that came out of the Parkmaster Plan and our community center sort of cost feasibility study was, we need to be thinking about how to make our spaces as flexible and to accommodate as many different uses as we possibly can. Those meeting rooms are probably the most underused in terms of that, in terms of conference space. So we've talked about exploring options for converting that to additional fitness space. Because as we look at what are we selling our memberships for, there's, you know, there's a group of folks that are coming, you know, first thing in the morning, lunchtime, right after work, and getting on the cardio equipment or using the weight equipment. We have to be very sensitive to big membership drives or pushes to add members because if people can't get on that equipment at a particular time, they're likely to say, this doesn't meet my needs, I want to, you know, I'm not going to renew my membership. So we're looking at really then converting, trying to think about and doing some cost benefit analysis on if we convert that space to additional cardio or fitness space, would that help us in being more self-sufficient?
My concern at this point is another fitness place coming into the city. We may want to take a look at how many pieces of equipment they have, so we're not doing a total competition, because that might promote us not doing that.
So we know what we don't want to do is replace the carpet. So we just move that, push that carpet back another year, so we can continue to explore what it is that we, what's the best option for cardio fitness.
She's talking about the two little rooms on the southeast corner where you walk at the dormitory, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd say taken.
All right, next we have to authorize the scope of services with GBA for Rock Creek channel improvements and all to the main drive, Mr. John Meldrum.
Yes, thank you. Over the past 10 years or so, as many of you know, we've done a number of stormwater improvements between all of them. That includes the Gateway site, flood wall at Mission Bowl, and the intersection with all of Mareway. This, this study focuses on the unimproved channel between the flood wall and the Gateway site. The two main drivers of this are two sections of the channel where we're having erosion issues. First one is at Mission Bowl, or not Mission Bowl, excuse me, Mission Bank. Their parking lot has started to erode and perma- within the creek. And then the second is an area behind the homes up on 68 Parish from 5118 to 5128. The backyards of these homes, the erosion started, there's a sharp drop-off of when you go in these backyards down to the creek. And what's happened is, is the erosion over time has started to slough off this slope and it's started to impact these folks' backyards. So manly defenses, retaining walls are basically starting to fall in the creek. So what we have done is asked GBA to provide us with a scope and fee for a conceptual design of this area to stop these erosion issues. They've, they've been asked to provide both a short-term and a long-term solution. And ultimately, this study would be used to acquire SMAC funding through the county to do this project.
Basically, go look at bank stabilization?
Bank stabilization, erosion control. Maybe the slope stabilization, but also capacity. But it'll take a look at all that stuff through this unimproved section between the flood wall and the gateway site.
That would be available for SMAC funding, that's a part of the.
For the project portion.
The project, right.
Right. And the way SMAC works is they, they require you to do what's called PES, which is a preliminary engineering study. Provide three options for improvements through there. This is basically the meat and potatoes of that. Like it says, it's conceptual, it's not the final design or anything that would be submitted to SMAC. But this will get you that long-term solution, the short-term solution. And what the long-term solution provides you with those options that are required by SMAC. And then once we do that and decide if we're going to move ahead with this project, know what we're going to do, we'll do the final design and the final PES. It all gets submitted to SMAC for funding.
And that area is all out of the floodplain now, right? From what we did before?
There might be a small portion over by Wendy's that is still in the floodplain.
Oh, is it?
Small portion. But the majority of that property is out.
So we currently have, and the council's talked about this before, and MD Management, or Mission Bank, MD Management actually owns the property, has approached the city for the last several years, asking for us to, you know, do something. We don't have an easement, so currently all of that is private property. And the council up to this point has said, on your property, you need to be responsible for the cost of any repairs or maintenance that occurs there. There are easements, stormwater easements on the south side of the creek. So we have easements on where the homes are. So I think this will just give us that opportunity. I think in the past, MD Management may be open or interested to some cost sharing or contributing to a portion of that. I will tell you, I talked to Brad Casey, I know several of you have heard from Mr. Casey. He's at 5128, I think.
5122.
5122. And I, in fact, I sent him a link to this packet last week and shared with him that we were taking this board. And he asked if he should attend, and I said, no, I think the council's, my sense is the council's expressed an interest in moving forward with at least this step, to start to give us some cost estimates and some idea of the scope. But I know he would be happy to come and talk if anybody is, is interested. I also, the new construction manager for MD Management stopped in St. Hall a couple of weeks ago asking about the erosion issues on their parking lot. I forwarded her the same information and have asked to try to get together with the appropriate people on their side to just start a conversation about how they might be interested in participating. So those people that we've talked to in the past or have contacted us are aware that this is before use evening and kind of moving forward.
And I'm sure Brad Casey would be happy to show you spec.
Yes.
So that property that is still in the floodplain, is that all commercial stuff? Is some of that residential?
Does it all be commercial?
It is, okay. So does that affect getting the SMAC funds if you've got property that's in a floodplain?
Actually, it helps.
It has helped, okay.
Easy points by having projects that take property out of the floodplain. So property that's in floodplain, street flooding, a number of issues all contribute to the point system of how they rent projects.
And then what has to be done to get that out of the floodplain?
That's, that's what this would tell us.
Okay. It's not just going to address, just put this in there and that'll take care of your erosion? But if you want to get it out of floodplain, you need to do this.
They're basically set in that entire section. So from, from where the flood wall stops by Mission Bowl, all the way down to the Gateway site, they're looking at all of that, including the two erosion problems. So that whole section of creek is basically their stuff, which would include potential capacity issues that would take that.
I would estimate that their short-term solution is, the short-term solution they come back with may not address capacity issues. But the long-term fix is going to address both the erosion and the capacity or floodplain issues. So that may be one of those things we have to kind of balance.
Do you already have an idea what that's going to entail?
We've seen numbers. I mean, MD Management at one point had an estimate for erosion control alone on their section. And this is probably six years old of about $165,000, just to deal with that, you know, their piece.
And basically what that was, building a retaining wall that would keep that creek from eroding further into the pouring.
Now, our engineer, Black and Beach, looked at it and I think bumped their estimate to 300, yeah, 300 and some odd thousand. So I don't know then for the whole section, but I think you're looking at some pretty significant.
I guess what I was, again, the hard way is, the Western Interceptor that I heard discussed several years ago, west of Lamar, whatever, they were talking about another interceptor up there. Would that, is that what has to happen, to get all that property out of floodplain? That's going to divert water that's running down through the creek now and bring it down the other way? Am I wrong?
What the, what the interceptor does is takes the load off of Rock Creek.
Right.
And it's, it's a combination of taking the load off and timing. So when you change the hydrology of how, where the water's flowing and how fast or the timing of how it gets there, that changes your flood level. So what the interceptor does.
I'm talking about the interceptor that's not there yet.
The interceptor that's not there yet basically does what the current interceptor does. That takes the load off of Rock Creek.
Right.
So they basically run parallel to each other.
From what I remember our former mayor saying at that one, we were talking about it before, that is what really has to happen to take the rest of this property out of floodplain?
No, it's one, one piece. So there are about, if you break it down into kind of segments or sections, there are about seven projects left to get from the rest of the Rock Creek channel out of the floodplain and the rest of the properties out of the floodplain. The interceptor has alleviated, we think, the Rock Creek channel, you know, really running behind us here and behind the businesses, overtopping during heavy events. So we think we've already seen some relief of that capacity issue. But there are still properties in the floodplain. So you would have to look at additional stormwater solutions, really from, you know, this house that's across 61st Street here down essentially to Maple, where the improvement kind of concluded at this point.
So what I'm understanding relative to a retention wall, we would get a recommendation out of whatever they put together as a design relative to it being six feet long or 460 feet long, correct? Which is going to really make a difference on the whole cost issue.
Well, I think what you're going to get is you're going to see a long-term solution is going to be, and I don't know, but let's just say it's a million dollars, right? So a million dollars to fix it kind of once and for all. The question is, can we get SMAC funding? And then do we have the ability to come up with our match or our contribution to that portion of it? Or how quickly can, you know, can we do that? I think what the short-term solution is going to show you is, if you're still potentially four or five years out from that, here's something you could do to alleviate your erosion concerns. And that price tag is going to be lower. And it's really just going to be intended to bridge the point and reduce the erosion until we can get to the long-term project.
And the short-term solution just bridges the gap. And then, and then the long-term solution is the ultimate solution to stop this.
And that's just what we need to get and address. We don't know other components of the city that have access to the creek. Along, whether it be there or streets over. We have a full vision of how many properties are potentially to be in the sink. It's kind of like we do with the sinkholes. I mean, you may have hotspots, parking lots and things like that. But we haven't done a full assessment halfway of how many other potential properties there are.
You know, Black and Beach and then the, here.
Yeah, I checked the Black and Beach in 2012.
And, you know, it's like, there are properties that are basically, that basically say this, this property's in the feet of floodplain. Property up here by the tennis courts, some of the properties across the street.
Marway out there.
Marway. So we know where a lot of those are. This one's a little bit unique because it's not really saying, hey, this, this house is in the floodplain. But the issue that we have over there, still stormwater related, is the erosion factor and the slope on the back of the yard.
So Black and Beach's estimates from that study of the kind of remaining work in Rock Creek were estimating somewhere between 20 and 30 million dollars of the work that was left that remained in the Rock Creek channel problem.
So we're trying to solve three problems. Capacity, get the property out of the floodplain and erosion. Who own, I guess it's back to ownership, so if, who owns, I guess, who owns the creek? What does an easement have to do with ownership? And it's such a private, private property. So how does all that interplay in the city's responsibility?
That section of creek, like Laura said a little bit earlier, the south side, we have easements.
Okay, what does that mean?
So we, we have.
Responsibility?
Responsibility to repair anything that we have an easement.
Okay.
Then MD Management lot, they own, their, their property line extends into creek. And almost to the south side, almost at the sun and back. So right now, basically, that portion of creek is private property.
The commercial side?
Correct.
The residential side that we have easements.
Correct. Basically, the south side, we have easements on. The commercial side, they basically own the creek according to lots.
So an example, maybe a temporary fix for the erosion would be slapping those riprap bundles or whatever along the side.
Gabian baskets.
What'd you call?
Gabian baskets.
Okay.
Yes. But yeah, I mean, that's a potential short-term solution. Whereas the long-term solution is going to be.
Widen the jail and concrete, the whole thing?
Yeah, I mean, a permanent.
Make it a little higher.
Well, actually, I think it was, you know, widening, but I think that was intended, our conversation's from years ago, was to keep that section of the channel sort of natural through there and not box that in. So I think that would be the less expensive solution there.
So we would do an engineering study, figure out options, short-term, long-term. Then we have an obligation to stabilize the bank on the south side. But we don't have an obligation to do anything on the north side. But it may be in our best interest to do that, correct?
Yes.
That'd be something we'd have to work with MD.
Right.
And like we say, we have, we would have an interest because ultimately, if you improve that, that entire section of channel, you're not only solving your problem, you're solving one for the rest of the team along the way. It's going to be a partnership.
Incentive.
Yes. And the funding, funding wise for SMAC is an 80/20, 80% county fund, 20% municipal.
And then I think to John or Laura, whichever, that before we decide and actually give them the bid or whatever, we decide to do, that we should take a walking tour and go down there. Because I think everybody should see the property up there and how it's eroded from that property. And we've done that before, and I think just be very supportive to it before we make a decision.
Before we make a decision on this, to get this study.
Okay, so how often do we do that?
Three years.
And I believe at least...
I believe it's three years with an option for four.
Okay, so we do it period out?
Correct.
And in this case, we actually selected two on-call engineering firms. So we actually, we've seen it work to our advantage, I think, in that we, we divide up that business a little bit, so we, even more so than what we've had in the past, we get a little bit of competition because we take each new project and give them the opportunity and provide a scope of fee for that. We've also, and I, I think we can go back and look, in previous contracts for on-call engineers, we've also given ourselves an out for projects over a certain dollar amount that we could go, essentially go back out to the market, but we were uncomfortable with those fees.
Any other questions? We didn't take this?
I'd like to see a moment, sadly, if I'm going to be someone's owners and everybody should have a word about this project.
All right. We have no discussion items, or any other items further?
I've got three things.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
I just, just FYI, we've invited Jason back to the August council meeting, he was unavailable in July, so we can present him with his plaque and make it through to the city council, so Jason will be here. He will be here on the 17th.
He wasn't on the council very long, she's got a little time.
A little time.
Well, just, just an FYI, Adam, I haven't even heard Tom Swanson, from Trans Systems, who did all, I had coffee with him this morning, and he wanted to know how things were going and kind of critique Johnson Drive, it's really kind of fun, but he wondered how we liked John, or Noll. I said, I love Noll, I think everybody likes Noll, and it's going very well, all the birds are all staying in place, but he didn't tell everybody, he's retiring, he has retired, so.
And I got to thank Pat for the party.
Yes, Pat, that was great.
You're a very nice child, so thank you very much.
That was fun, yeah, thanks for putting people to turn out.
My kid tried to run out of cookies. I don't know how many cookies my daughter ate, but she came out, I mean, it's like dump stuff for you, hanging out of her mouth.
She was great.
Yeah.
What a good personality.
She gets one with the head. So your wife has said that, probably should. Yeah, probably.
I've got something for you guys, I've got something to stick around the dog. I've done a little research, went through some check grounds. I should have brought a book.
Yes. Just waiting on the cops, so.
Patrol lanes.